That is after lunch, this purely Q and A. So you can bring all of your questions there. I do ask that all of your questions be purely hypothetical and not something that you're actually dealing with as a board. I want you to take those actual questions to your town council or city council. But you can ask questions in the chat. And hopefully, Jennifer, you can scan through things and tell me at the, at the break when we get up to the checklist or the cheat sheet slide, rather, if there are anything that's particular for that session. So jumping into appeals administrative decision, these are statutory creatures, 67433 and 6765 that are taken by a person aggrieved of a decision. That decision has to concern the zoning ordinance, however. If it's a provision of the site plan regulations or the subdivision regulations, those are not the purview of ZVA jurisdiction. It can be from any administrative officer, and that is a very broad definition is given there. Building inspector, selectman, other officer in charge of giving a decision. That decision has to, however, be the construction interpretation or application of the terms of the zoning ordinance. It does not, however, by that statutory provision, include discretionary enforcement provisions, proceedings, rather, of the selectmen. If they decide to go forward, if they decide not to, that's the selectman's call as the managers of the operations of the municipality. A challenge to the building permit, though, has to be made to the ZVA. We do have a case, this is the second frat house case, the SAE case of 2019, where the zoning ordinance required that the frat houses be in conjunction with an institutional use. They couldn't be standing alone. And here, the Dartmouth suspended SAE's charter and the code enforcement officer issued a violation. The ZVA initially found that the frat had existed prior to zoning and the college moved for rehearing and showed that it was always only tied with the operations of the college. And so the ZVA reversed, which was upheld by the trial court and Supreme Court took it again and did what they frequently do and split the baby. Here, the concern by the Supremes was it's an unconstitutional delegation of ZVA authority to say, "College, you decide. Are they an institution or tied to an institution or not?" The Supreme Court remanded the case back to the ZVA for the determination of was the fraternity an institution of its own right? One of the key points that I flag in this decision is that the lack of prior enforcement actions doesn't prohibit a court, current enforcement action. So that that has been some debate at times when an applicant comes forward saying, "Oh, wait a second. I've been doing this for 10 years. Why, why are you picking on me now?" Well, if it's in violation of the zoning ordinance, it's violation of the zoning ordinance. Also, this case stands for the premise that the ZVA is free to accept or reject evidence as long as the decision is reasonable and it can reverse itself. You can realize you made a mistake. It's perfectly wonderful. Your appeal of administrative decision can be from a decision made by the planning board. And that's based again on the construction interpretation or application of the zoning ordinance. Unless the zoning ordinance provision in question clearly says that it's under 67421, which itself is under 67416 Roman II, that is a special land use, innovative land use control provision that should also say that those provisions delegate its administration to the planning board. You have conditional use permits put in that way. And some communities are putting more things under conditional use permits rather than special exceptions. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But it's something to flag as you consider your zoning ordinance amendments at times through your planning boards. Here, the planning board decision is ripe when the decision is actually made. And that's the Atwater v. Plainfield case. In my opinion, that case stands for there's a vote. There's something that's, that's a hard decision. We are saying X, you're allowed this density. You are allowed that road in that location or that buffer. Those kinds of hard decisions, that's when an appeal is, is ripe. There are a number of cases where the court has addressed particular instances of appeals of administrative decision. The last one here, the Lincoln v. Shenard case is the most recent. And that was the interpretation of the junkyard provisions, the zoning ordinance. And here, the guy had a Yankee yard without a doubt. And his claim was, "Well, I'm not selling it commercially. I may trade things out with people at times, or a friend may take something, or, you know, somebody maybe give me a couple bucks, but I'm not advertising it as a junkyard for people to come in and buy things." And the court said, "Doesn't matter. You know, a rose is a rose is a rose. Junkyard's the same." But remember the accurate transport case of several years back now, that the mere vote to accept the site plan as complete does not trigger the vote to bring, is not the level of a vote to bring an appeal to the ZVA. Timing is everything. There is a key provision, and I see I have a typo there, that there's a 30-day appeal window to come to Superior Court after the ZVA makes its ultimate decision. And the most recent there is the Crane Wood Shores case where the application was, was a day late. There is a provision so that the old rule of you had to file in both ZVA and Superior Court to protect your rights is technically no longer required. However, some of us are professionally paranoid and will bring the action both places just to be safe. But the key there is if a case is brought both to the ZVA and the Superior Court, the Superior Court case should be stayed until the ZVA makes its decision. And we have an unpublished decision from the Supremes in the town of Wyndham case cited there that confirms that, that requirement. Reasonable time is also required when bringing the appeal of administrative decision. And usually, your ZVA rules will include a date. Normally, it's 30 days. I do know of one instance where the, the window is 65 days, which is incredibly long. And so you have an upside down pyramid where you have to file to Superior Court if the planning board has made its general decisions and then have 65 days in that community to bring a companion ZVA appeal. Normally, they're 30 days to be in lockstep. But as these cases show, there can be shorter periods. 14 days, 15 days have been confirmed. But when there is no statement in the ZVA rules of procedure or in the zoning ordinance, my preference is it's in the rules of procedure because then the ZVA can modify it without having to go to town meeting. Tusanovic case there of a couple decades now says it's got to be in a reasonable time and 55 days after the permit was issued is outside of that time window. Reason for that is you, people have the right to rely upon the permits being issued and start their work. Sometimes there can be a second bite of the apple where a developer comes in and wants to modify what they've, they've gotten relief for, either the planning board or the ZVA. The Harborside v. Portsmouth case, the second Harborside case there, confirms that the amendment of a site plan can trigger the application of underlying zoning amendments that would otherwise not have been applicable because you have the vesting rules on once you get an approval and act upon it, you're vested from subsequent changes of the zoning ordinance. Here, the developer had applied for conventions, or excuse me, a set of retail spaces, hotel apartments, things of that nature. And came back and wanted to add a massive convention center instead of some of the retail and some of the hotels, some of the condo. And the Supreme Court said, "We look and see what was your original approval for and then what you're seeking now." And it basically did, you were A, B, and C. And now you're wanting to be A, B, C, and D. You didn't have D before. So because of that change, you're subject to the intervening zoning amendment changes. And in this case, they were significant parking regulations that had come into play. The underlying issue is sometimes, do I need to bring an appeal of administrative decision if I'm also going for a variance? If I'm going to say, "I'm not going to fight the code enforcement officer. It's an ambiguous provision of the zoning ordinance. I'm just going to go for a variance." And the Bartlett v. Manchester case stands for the proposition that you don't have to exhaust administrative relief by going for an appeal of administrative decision and still be able to raise in front of the ZVA, "I don't think I need to be here for a variance, but if I do, here's why I comply." I have done several of those in the intervening years since Bartlett was decided. And I was remiss in not clarifying. One of the hats that I sometimes wear is the hats representing the forces of darkness. In a community where we're not general or special counsel for the land use boards or the town, we will represent developers, we will represent property owners, we will represent abutters. So I bring this from, from the perspective of both sides of the aisle. And that Bartlett v. Manchester case, I have used several times to say just that. "I don't think I need to be here. ZVA decide that first. If you agree with me, then we don't have to spend the rest of the evening together. If you don't agree with me, then I'll go through all the provisions of Hawaii. The zoning variance is, makes sense." And we have, again, the SAE 2 case where it's holding the, the violation itself may serve as the basis for an administrative appeal. But the ZVA can't decide an issue beyond that of the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. So it was also something of a provision of the town's code for resident occupancy that wasn't in the zoning ordinance. Once it comes to you as a ZVA, the underlying decision is stayed. In essence, they can't go forward and build on it. But they're also not losing their rights under that appeal until, under that permit, rather, until the appeal works its way through. There is a proviso that says, "Look, if the work started and it's, it's all torn up and if we don't either close it up or get this, get the drainage control structures put in so that it handles the water, there's going to be imminent peril to life, health, safety, property, or the environment." And there, the code enforcement officer can give a certification saying, "We understand it's on appeal. We understand nothing else is going on, but we need them to get this work done to button it up." That's allowed under 676.6. Sometimes appeals of administrative decisions will deal with constitutional challenges to the underlying zoning ordinance provisions. Is it an allowed ordinance provision? Did it exceed the scope of authority granted to municipality by the legislature? And we have a host of cases that are dealing with those kinds of issues. Also municipal stopple can sometimes be raised. However, we have the Dembiac case. Dembiac dealt with a, getting a building permit for a house that prior to the, that was built, prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy, the code enforcement officer said, "You know, I issued that building permit in the wrong, in a wrong way because you have an apartment over the boathouse. So you can't have two, two dwelling units on the, on the site. You've got to go get a variance for that." And the ZVA wouldn't grant a variance for that. And Dembiac raised the municipal stopple argument at the Superior Court. And that was for the first time, hadn't been raised below at the ZVA. And here, the court said, "That's fine. Municipal stopple is not one of those things that's conferred in the jurisdiction to the ZVA under the statutes. You get to raise that equitable argument of they did something, they, the town, did something that I relied upon to my detriment and financial hardship. Therefore, you can't let them enforce that provision against me in this instance." And the court agreed with that. The court did distinguish some of the prior cases, including the Thomas v. Hooksett case where municipal stopple was asserted at the ZVA level. But the court didn't address whether the ZVA had jurisdiction to determine that issue in those earlier cases. Forrester v. Henneker is a, a case now that is largely overturned by legislation, but it's still very relevant for a definition, excellent definition of accessory use. It goes into how the court examines whether accessory use is truly accessory to the existing principal use. First and foremost, you have to have a principal use. It's not one of those things that an accessory use can be the only thing on the property. It needs, must be occasioned by and subordinate to that principal use. And it also must be associated with that frequency that is substantial enough to raise it above rarity. I like that phrase. And here, it was a wedding venue on, on a farm site. Back at that time, fairly novel, creative wedding plan. Now, it may be frightfully viewed as much more common. And the legislation, legislature has gone back and forth on agritourism issues. So anytime you're facing the claim of an agritourism, you want to make sure you're dealing with your town council. Old case of Willette is, stands for the premise that the ZVA can conduct de novo, meaning taking it all up as if it's for the first time from a new decision, new review, without having to rely on the underlying decision from the, from the sister board. In this case, there was historic district commission whose district bisected the lot in question. The parcel was bought for Hannaford's grocery store. Historic district didn't like that because they didn't like that. And the ZVA conducted its own hearing, viewed that the modifications that Hannaford was willing to make was good enough and that the, because the property was bisected by the district line, it, it made sense. But you're not required as a ZVA to give de novo review. You can rely on the underlying sister board decisions. One case to remember, the CDBA v. Thornton case. The Fisher v. Dover standard applies to everybody now, planning board and ZVA. Fisher v. Dover is an old case in front of the ZVA where an applicant had been denied at one meeting, came back with the second, the exact same application for a second meeting and was, was approved. Didn't go up to appeal, just came back and, and said, you know, "I really want it." And the ZVA in that instance gave it to him. The abutters were understandably miffed and brought appeal. And the courts put down the, the standard that there has to be a substantial change in the application or in the underlying facts involving the decision. And I used that in one instance where the law had changed so significantly from the prior denial. It was a denial of a variance in the 1990s. We then had Simplex and Boshia and, and other things now that we'll talk about when the variances come up. But the court agreed with me that that was a substantial enough change, the change in the law. I give you a cheat sheet as appendix A for appeals of administrative decision that gives a, you know, a single page or so thumbnail of what's there. And Jennifer, do we have any quick questions for appeals of administrative decision or shall I rocket on?
There are no questions at, at the moment.
Wonderful answer. Coming on to special exceptions. Remember, these are different from variances. Special exceptions, a variance, rather, seeks permission to do something that the ZVA, the zoning ordinance, rather, says, "Thou shalt not." A special exception comes in to say, the zoning ordinance says, "You shall be allowed to do it if you meet the checklist. And you need to meet all of the checklist. That checklist needs to be in the zoning ordinance." And I know several that have very loose and one size fits all provisions for zone, for special exceptions in their zoning ordinance. I know several communities that have very detailed lists of special exceptions for different kinds of uses. The, the list might be very lengthy for a, say, a convenience store or a dog kennel. It might be much less for a home occupancy where you don't have any employees. But that checklist is the key governing factor. The ZVA on its own cannot vary or waive those requirements. And we have the TID and MUDG cases from way back in the, in New London. Those cases stand for the premise that the ZVA can't just ignore an item on the list on their own. You know, the applicant comes for a special exception, the list is A, B, C, and D. And the zoning board says, "You know, Terry, we like you. You don't have to do C. That's not allowed." What is allowed, however, is for the applicant to ask for a variance from that provision. But they have to make the application and they have to meet the variance standard. That premise is supported by the 1808 corporation case. And they're very different situations. The first set of cases, the ZVA did it on its own. The second situation is where an applicant is, is coming forward and asking for relief from a provision in the zoning ordinance that they can't otherwise meet. They have to meet all of that and then come back for the special exception. Can be in the same meeting, however. The applicant has the burden of producing the sufficient evidence on each of them so that a finding on each can be made. If those conditions are met, the ZVA has to grant the special exception. You know, you can't add things to the list just like you can't ignore things from the list. And as with variances, special exceptions run with the land. I do note the old Garrison v. Henneker case where the court noted very unique situation that the ZVA had imposed, saying it didn't run with the variance in question, did not run with the land, it was solely to the applicant. If you remember, that's, that's the explosives plant case in the middle of 1,600 acres of Henneker. The court overruled the grant of that ZVA variance because they didn't find that the acreage was, there were special conditions of that acreage that just been distinguished it from others in the neighborhood. But the ZVA had said, "You've done such a great job, applicant, of producing such wonderful evidence showing that you have a great safety record. You haven't had explosions, you haven't had trucking accidents. You're really going to do it right. Great. We're going to say this variance is for you. But if you sell the property to somebody else in operating the explosives plant, they have to come back in and get a new variance." Remember that special exceptions are valid for two years from the date of the final approval. Can be extended by the local ordinance or the ZVA for good cause. They can't expire within six months of resolution through the planning board process. In essence, you get a ZVA decision on April 1st of 2020 and they don't get through the ZVA process until June 1st of 2023. They're still okay. They're still allowed to keep going forward because they had to go through the, the planning board process. We do have a similar provision for variances. There is a provision now that allows old variances to become expired. But you have to, as a town, go through a specifically statutorily set out provision to amend the zoning ordinance. And then there's a window of time that is allowed for those old variances to be considered lapsed. If you don't adopt that zoning amendment, those old ordinances, old variances and special exceptions are viewed still as valid. This provision was added several years ago to the frustration of abutters to cell towers, in essence, saying that no special exception or variance is needed if you're going to co-locate or modify an existing tower pursuant to 12K2. That means the co-location means you can go up 20 feet and add additional antennae. Also, we have the ADU statutes to remember that we're required in towns to allow them as a matter of right, attached accessory dwelling units, but can put in provisions for either conditional use permits through the planning board. And I have a typo there that's 67421, not 37421, or by special exception through the ZVA in any zone where single-family dwellings are permitted. Also, you have the right to allow ADUs by, that are detached within the provisions of your zoning ordinance. I also give you a cheat sheet on special exceptions at the end of the written materials. Jennifer, any questions on special exceptions?
No questions in the chat.
Rock and roll. Variances. Those of you who have been around long enough, and when I'm in live session, I always love to see a show of hands. And I know some members can, can serve 20, 30 years on the ZVA. If so, you've seen the law change at least three times. The old provision was, was prior to Simplex, "Thanks for playing. You're not going to get a variance." Simplex comes in and says, "You're the..." Simplex comes in and says you're the constitutional safety valve, ZBA, you have to be granting variances. And here are the provisions that we're going to require you to meet. How we interpret the statutory provisions. The court then creates BOSHA in 19 in 2004 that created a separation between use variances, putting the convenience store in the middle of the residential zone, or area variances. Having setback encroachments or not having enough lot size, things of that nature. That was court created and the legislature didn't like that. So yeah, in 2009, they pass Senate Bill 147, which is effective January 1, 2010. And that's what we've been dealing with for the last 13 years. The statute says it's returning to simplex and revives Governor's Island, simplex being the pre-BOSHA standard, Governor's Island being a pre-simplex standard that basically said if you couldn't have a reasonable use on the property, then you could get a variance. But if you could have an otherwise reasonable use, you didn't get the variance. Our standards now read as the variance won't be contrary to public interest. Spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values surrounding properties are not diminished, and most importantly, the unnecessary hardship standard, which means owing to special conditions the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. And that it is the property, not the owner. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision, the thing that you're trying to get a variance, they're trying to get a variance from, and the specific application of that provision to the property. What does it mean if you keep that 50-foot setback from the wetlands for this house getting, seeking to be expanded? What's what's the fair and substantial relationship? And the proposed use is reasonable. The second prong of hardship is what the legislature was saying was a return to Governor's Island. Basically, you still have the same phrase of special conditions of the property. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformity. And the variance is necessary to enable a reasonable use. They're very close. Sometimes the variance is, look, you can't, you've got overlapping setbacks. You can't put a house on that existing taxed lot and comply with all setbacks. That's when B really comes into play, in my opinion. And this definition applies both to what would have been area and use variances under BOSHA. I remind you of Bartlett v Manchester, you can determine, ask the ZBA to determine if a variance is even needed. And we're gonna run through four key cases. I've got others in the written materials, but these, I think, are the big four. If you're new to a ZBA, new within the last two years and you haven't read these cases, take some time to read the actual cases, they're available on caselaw. If you Google the names, you'll you'll pick up a copy, you can get them off the court's website, which is reached through nh.gov. But Perro, Harborside, Malachi Glen, and Farrar. Perro is interesting because it was for a shed, a shed within a foot of the property line. And the impacted abutter was all in support. It was, they had a similarly non-conforming shed on their side of the line. So they were going, I don't care, put a shed in. The problem is, the owner admitted there was an alternate location that could be used that didn't need a variance. And the ZBA was concerned about construction congestion on the lakefront. And the applicant said, but wait a second, there are a whole bunch of other folks that have sheds in violation, including my neighbor next door and folks down the street and whatnot. You're you're picking on me. The ZBA went to some length, they'd had a number of sidewalks, a number of hearings, dug into some files and found that the either those violations either predated the ordinance, were not in violation. Or gee, thanks, we didn't know about those, we'll go enforce against those as well. So the guy was not as welcome at the block party next year. ZBA did consider the cumulative impact that was raised in the Bacon case. Bacon was a BOSHA era case. It was what's called a plurality decision because we have five justices on our Supreme Court. And everybody thought differently. The Chief Justice Broderick wrote the plurality decision. We had two separate concurring opinions that supported his decision, but for different reasons. And we had two dissenters. So the cumulative impact clause comes from one of the concurrences, Justice Duggan's concurrence. And it basically said, ZBAs have a legitimate right to be concerned about cumulative impact of these little variances all around the the water bodies. In Perro, the applicant did not challenge that rationale of the ZBA. So the Supreme Court notes that it assumed without deciding that cumulative impact was a legitimate basis. I say, I flag this because we're gonna talk about some decisions later where they do have the issue in front of them. And they say, ZBAs, don't go with cumulative impact. That's not a legitimate basis for your denial of a variance. Harborside is the first case in 2011 that dealt with the new statute. It dealt with two sign variances on a big hotel project in downtown Portsmouth. And here, the ZBA really did their job well. They made specific findings in support of each of the five criteria. They used my favorite, because. If you make because statements, you're doing well. We find that it's in the spirit of the ordinance, because X, Y, and Z. When you do that, you are supported, no matter which side of the decision you come down on. You would grant it or you deny it. If you use because statements, you take nothing else away from today. Use because statements. The trial court in this case, however, and the case was brought by a competing hotel up the street, affirmed one of the sign variances and reversed the other. The Supreme Court, however, upheld the ZBA on both, using this new. And they also did a nice little dig at the legislature, saying it's similar to, but not identical with simplex or Governor's Island. So legislature, you may thought you have done that, but you really didn't, you created a new standard. With respect to public interest and spirit of the ordinance, the first of the two prong, two criteria. Court cites back to Farrar, which we'll deal with in a much older case of Chester Rod and Gum, that those two are really decided together. That you really shouldn't have a vote on public interest, yes, and a vote on spirit of the ordinance, no. They're the same set of criteria. And that that criteria is basically unduly and in a marked degree conflicting with the stated purposes of the ordinance, that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. So that's what you're seeking to determine as a ZBA on the first two prongs. The court reminds us, mere conflict with the terms of the ordinance is insufficient to deny the variance. Keep in mind, folks, they're coming to you for the relief of a variance because they conflict with the purposes of the zoning ordinance. They they conflict with the provision. They are here for that setback variance for the deck because they're they can't, they're not putting it where it complies. So that can't be held against them. The two methods that were recognized by the court of whether such a violation occurs is whether there'll be an alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, my example is putting that convenience store in the dead center of that residential zone. Or whether there would be a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. We're putting the propane storage facility and filling station in the middle of the residential zone. We're putting the slaughterhouse in the middle of the residential zone, things like that. The trial court in this case on the on the first sign was focusing on whether the signs would serve the public interest. And the court said, you've got that backwards. You are supposed to say, will granting the variance be contrary to the public interest? There's a difference in emphasis and which path of evidence you would take. On substantial justice, the court cites through several of the older decisions. And this line of the only guiding rule is any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. Again, the trial court had said the the focus of, you know, the only apparent benefit to the public would be, you know, seeing the location from far away. And the court said, that's not, that's not what we're asking about. Will denying this variance, which we know will be creating an injury to the property owner because they want to use the property the way they want, will that be a gain to the general public? And if there's no gain to the general public, then it's injustice and the applicant meets the substantial justice criteria. The trial court did not even reach the unnecessary hardship prong for the parapet sign. The parapet sign was one on top of the building. So it remanded the decision back to the trial court for that instance. On the marquee sign, the marquee is the one down on the street. The ZBA only used the first of the two, they've used 5A, not 5B, on the new definitions of unnecessary hardship. And the court recognized the the to-be-built block of a building as a special condition of the property. So that you can look at what is the property going to be under this already approved plan for this building as a special condition. You obviously look at what's the shape, what's the, where are the wetlands? How much frontage? What are the abutters? Where are the abutters? Things of that nature, when you're looking at special conditions of the property. The court rejected the competing hotels' argument that size was not relevant based on the concurrence in Bacon. The court here notes, you know, sorry, concurrences don't have presidential value, they're not a majority decision. And Parade's not claiming that the signs are unique, they're claiming that the property is because of its built condition. They also rejected the argument, it's it's, there's no unnecessary hardship because they could deal with a smaller sign. Here, that's an old provision of the BOSHA standard, the necessity. There's one of BOSHA's prongs was you couldn't locate it in compliance. Here, necessity is not the the factor, it's reasonable use. So I urge you not to go down the path of, you don't need to put that there. The application in front of you is to put the structure there. Is it reasonable to put it there? That's your alignment of of inquiry. And reasonableness is much like beauty, it's in the eyes of the beholder. As long as you can use because statements to support your decision, I think you've got a defensible position. Again, the court rejects Harborside's arguments of, you know, same results because that's a reliance on the defunct standard under BOSHA. And finally, on diminution of value, the only evidence of diminution, no diminution of value was the applicant's attorney basically saying, no, you know, this isn't downtown Portsmouth, nobody's having, gonna have their property values diminished by these two signs, one on the top of this big building, one on the side of the big building. When there are other buildings around it that have similar signs. And it's not cluttering the streetscape, and those were specific findings made by the ZBA in the record. And the court goes to some length to say, that's enough because it's the ZBA's job to resolve conflicts conflicts of the evidence and assess the credibility of the witnesses, the office of proof coming into them. And you don't check your common sense at the door. You're entitled to rely on your own knowledge, experience, and observations. And here, the ZBA made some findings of fact that there's no diminution because we think X, Y, and Z, the abutters are here. So the marquee sign variances were were upheld. Malachi Glen is an older case. While it is a BOSHA era case, it is still being cited by the court. And it dealt with a property that had been approved in, I guess it's now, two busts ago. That it was approved for a 100-unit self-storage facility. The bust happens and interim years follow and the town imposes a wetland buffer ordinance in its zoning ordinance that wasn't in place. And the impact of that is the 100 units can only now be 50. And oh, by the way, you can't cross from the highway on Route 4, First New Hampshire Turnpike to the property because you have to cross wetlands now. Into, you have to cross the wetlands buffer. So the applicant comes back and says, I need a variance. And here is all of my evidence to show how I am going to treat the stormwater on these 100 units, including what are were then, you know, everybody's standard detention ponds, but also a creative use, having an underground facility for capturing the the stormwater before it was even released to the detention ponds for for normal drainage out. One element of Malachi that is important to remember is the distinction between when the court will remand a decision back to the ZBA and when it will render to the decision itself. It says the remand will come back to the ZBA if the ZBA has not addressed the factual issues at hand. The court will render the decision when the reasonable fact finder could only reach one decision. Also goes back to the conjoining of public interest and spirit of the ordinance. And here, there was uncontroverted evidence of the surrounding uses and the protections of the wetlands. And the ZBA was not entitled to ignore that and basically come for its decision. Those words that I hate to ever hear from a ZBA client of mine. Well, the members, the town voters voted for this provision and it's our obligation to uphold it. That is the golden ticket of reversal. Don't say that, please. That's again, is the request for the variance can't be used to deny the variance. They are only in front of you because they can't comply with the zoning ordinance. Simplex is still valid from that concept of constitutional safety valve. You are the play in the joints between unlimited property rights and unlimited police powers of the of the town zoning ordinance. Your intention with those two in trying to find a balance. The reason being is if you are not finding balance, if you didn't exist, zoning ordinance could be overturned as an unconstitutional taking. So it's important that you're serving this role, thank you for it. Um, this case cites to Vigent and Vigent continues to be cited by the court. Um, and, and a use is presumed reasonable if it's a permitted use. If it's in the zoning ordinance as a permitted use, it's an allowed use and deemed reasonable. The Vigent case had, was an old decision where property at a, an intersection, let's, 750 feet on one road, 250 feet on the other. But with the two road setbacks and interior wetland setbacks, there was roughly a building envelope of less than a hundred feet by less than 20 feet. And the applicant was coming in for relief from those setbacks for a five-unit multifamily building. The ZBA tried to horse trade and say, eh, five's too much, we'll give you three. And uh, the, otherwise denied the variance. And the uh, applicant Vigent comes to the court and says, I'm an allowed use. They can't take the, you know, nickel me down from five to three. And the court agreed because at that time, the decision, the, the zoning ordinance had no density requirements. Many zoning ordinances now have density requirements. Uh, so it's not going to be as common, but it's still key on the premise of is it in the zoning ordinance as an allowed use? If it's allowed use, it's reasonable. The remaining factors are, are there for historic purposes because uh, again, that was under a Boesha standard. Farrar Farrar is uh, also a Boesha case, one of the last. Uh, and that dealt with uh, a request for a mixed use of one of the honkin' big old historic Victorian homes in downtown Keene, uh, right off the drag. Uh, the ZBA granted those um, because the zone allowed apartments, multifamily, and it allowed offices, but was silent on the mix, the mixed use. Um. Again, we go through a set of cases on uh, the conjoining of the two uh, first prongs. Uh, and the court looked at the findings again of the ZBA. Findings on so size of the lot, size of the house, loud uses. Adjacent historic homes were now offices that had frankly, a far higher uh, traffic count. And uh, the appeal in a butter was basically the backside of the property where there was a district line. And uh, the ZBA could reasonably have found, the court ruled that the property could be converted one way or the other. Uh, and that the zoning restriction still interferes with the reasonable use. The applicant wanted to keep one of the units for himself. Uh, but he needed help paying the taxes on a 7,000 square foot house. Um. The uh, the key there is the built condition of the property. I think that's the takeaway here. That's why it's Farrar is still, still of import. And I give you again, a cheat sheet on variances as appendix C. Uh, Jennifer, any, any questions now?
Still nothing in the chat.
Wonderful. One thing to remember, we still technically have some distinctions between use and area variances in the court's language. Uh, but we have the statute that says, no, this standard applies to both. Um, the uh, other thing to remind you of is we have a special provision under 67433 Roman five for disability variances. That means you don't, an African doesn't have to have a showing of unnecessary hardship. If they're seeking, for example, to put the handicap ramp uh, along the front of the property uh, to get grandma into the house uh, for uh, for that, into that setback. You don't need to show unnecessary hardship there. It does still require that there be harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. Um, and as ZBA can say, that variance lasts only as long as it's, that person is occupying property. The, I have had instances where a house is built for handicap use uh, or duplex is built for handicap use on both sides by various organizations. So it, it wasn't tied to a particular individual, but it was tied to, it's here for purpose to be ADA compliant. Equitable waivers. Equitable waivers are slightly different statute, 33A rather than just 33. And it is limited to the physical layout, the mathematical or dimensional requirements imposed by zoning ones. The 30-foot setback, the, the uh, lot size, uh, things of that nature. Usually however, there's setbacks. Uh, but it's not a use restriction. The Schroder case of several years ago dealt with was the provision of the zoning warrants in, in play. Basically the creation of a wetlands overlay district that said what uses could or could not be put into uh, the buffer area created by that overlay. And the court read the provisions of that zoning ordinance provision as a use restriction. You can do this, you can't do that. Not an area setback type of requirement only. And the court said, in essence, Schroders, you can't go for an equitable waiver. ZB, you can't grant one on that provision. There are four criteria set out in the statute. The first is basically the timing rule. Was the error discovered uh, before the structure subs- substantially complete or before a non-conforming lot is sold to a bona fide purchaser? The uh, second is that the violation is not the outcome of ignorance, uh, obfuscation, failure to inquire or bad faith. But instead is either a good faith error in measurement or an error in zoning interpretation by the municipal officer in charge. Um, sometimes these can be, you're in the Dembiac case. You're, you're entitled to build the, the house where you are. Uh, some, it's a, this is the property line. I'm keeping uh, uh, the necessary 20 feet off the line, but I'm right at 20 feet. And in setting the form for the foundation, somebody sets it a foot too close. The physical violation does not constitute a nuisance or diminish surrounding property values or interfere with the future use of either the surroundings uh, or the uh, subject. And finally, that the degree of construction is really so much that the cost to correct far outweighs any public benefit. You know, we made an oops in that foundation form, but the foundation is poor, the house is up. And we're now realizing that line wasn't the correct line. It should be here. Um. And please forgive us. Equitable waivers are really a whoops rule. You know, somebody's made a mistake. And can they, uh, is it fair to hold them to the absolute letter of the law? Or can we play in the joints and be a constitutional safety valve? The provisions also say that if the violation has lasted for more than 10 years without an enforcement provision, without enforcement action, including a letter, then they don't have to satisfy the first two criteria. Now remember, those first two criteria are the um, discovery and the no bad faith, which I find interesting. But that's been the way the law has been for more than 20 years. Actually, probably more than 40 years. Um. Going forward, the property is not deemed uh, non-conforming by getting the waiver. But also it still has to comply with the future uh, provisions of the ordinance. If it's uh, allowed by a equitable waiver to be in that location and they want to come back and say, I'm going to put a deck now on that non-conforming side. They still need to come back and get a variance for that non-conforming deck. Uh, and you, you get one bite at the apple here. It doesn't prevent you from being obligated to know in the future what the, what the zoning ordinance says. We have two uh, cases cited in the materials. Uh, one is a three J X decision. The three J X, just so you know, is, we have five justices, only three sit on three J X. So it's not a binding precedent going forward. Um, but here uh, the court affirmed, excuse me, a court, the Supreme Court reversed the trial court's affirming of the ZBA's grant of the equitable waiver where the evidence really was showing the owner consciously held the wrong line and knew he was holding the wrong line. So you can't grant an equitable waiver for that. Uh, more importantly, Deets is the first uh, decision uh, that's published by the Supremes on the issues of an equitable waiver. And here is the, as the uh, slide indicates, there's a lot of activity, a lot of, of approvals on this lakefront property on, on Winnie. And uh, it was, it came to be known that some of those additions that had been previously granted had, were a little bit more in the setback than had originally been thought. Uh, the abutters, being such wonderful neighbors, wanted the whole thing torn down. Uh, and the trial court affirmed the ZBA, which the Supreme Court also affirmed. Uh, here, the uh, ZBA in Tufton Borough had made um, the general findings that, that all of the conditions are met before statutory criteria. The court found that you don't technically need to make uh, written findings on each element. That provision is no longer valid because of House Bill 1661, which we're uh, about to show, talk about. Uh, you do however, interpret the statutory provisions broadly about reliance on a misstep or misrep by the muni official. And while it's the applicant's burden always to prove that they meet the four criteria for an equitable waiver, once that is found, the burden shifts to the opposing party uh, to show to the court an error of law or unreasonableness. This case also stands for that premise that we love, that you don't check your common sense at the door. You use your knowledge, experience and common sense as ZBA members. Also clarifies one point that there was some argument about variance is not a prerequisite to get a special except equitable waiver. You don't have to get an equitable, a variance denied before coming to for an equitable waiver. You can go straight for the equitable waiver. This also puts the kibosh finally on the cumulative impact argument of, of Bacon. That's not to be extended, at least in the case of an equitable waiver. Based on the strength of the language in that decision, I say it doesn't apply to anything. Equitable waiver, special exception uh, or variance. We have appendix D for you as a cheat sheet on equitable waivers. Jennifer, any, any questions yet?
We had a couple of um, chats, but they weren't directly related to equitable waivers.
Okay, we can come back to them if we have time at the end. Uh, 91A, 91A applies to you. Don't think it doesn't. Uh, my simple rules are emails are not your friend. Don't use emails other than for your board secretary or assistant to send out the information. Here's the packet we just received, or can you make a meeting on May 12th? But your response should only be to the board assistant. Don't do a reply all. If I had, was omnipotent ruler of all I surveyed for one millisecond, I would move the reply all to a far side of the toolbar in Outlook, not right beside reply. Um, you are very seldom, as a ZBA, will you have the ability to go into what's called a non-public session? All of your business is intended to be in the public session, a public noticed meeting. But 91A3 Roman two subsection L allows you to consider legal advice given to the board or the chair or board member, either in writing or orally in a non-public session. However, if you're in a non-public session, you've got to go into the non-public session in the particular way that's 91A3 requires you to do, meaning a roll call vote, stating the specific provision you're using to go into the session. You have to keep minutes of the meeting. That's the non-public portion. You have to come out of the non-public into the public session again, noting the time. And you have to decide in the public session, whether you're going to seal the minutes of the non-public session. Sealing means those minutes aren't readily available to the uh, public. That has other impacts if you do seal them. 91A2 now requires the approved minutes and the notices of meetings to be posted on the website or listed on the website where they can be found. Um, and remember, the alternative to a non-public session is to have a non-meeting with your town council. Non-meeting is a provision allowed under 91A, uh, colon two. You as a board are entitled to get legal counsel, just like any individual is entitled to get legal, legal counsel. But it has to be of, set up by the, my recommendation is by your board chair and your legal assistant. Here's what we're talking about in the sealed minutes. Uh, the statute comes into play uh, in July of 2021 that now requires a list of all sealed minutes to be kept. There's some ambiguity if you have to go back and add to the list those minutes that are previously sealed. I think the intention was, yes, you have to do that. Um, it also acknowledges a, a new exception under 91A5 that uh, documents that are protected by the attorney-client and the attorney work product privilege are exempt from production. We now, oh, are there any questions on 91A, Jennifer?
There is one that came in that was a little bit similar to that. And the question was, if the meeting is recorded to help the secretary with minutes and someone asks for a copy of the recording before the minutes are done, do we need to provide a copy to them?
My answer is yes. The minutes are, the tape is available until the minutes are approved. Uh, or if somebody has asked for them, or if it's highly contentious litigation matter likely to come up, my recommendation is you keep the tape. The minutes however, once approved are the minutes. Those are the official record from the town. Now, there's been more than one instance where a tape or is transcribed or uh, I've even had situations where a court reporter has been brought. Uh, because the applicant really wants to make sure they have everything uh, that is said, you know, uh, because they're professionally paranoid that the minutes may not reflect everything. Uh, so uh, the answer is until the minutes are approved, it's definitely available. Whatever your town policy is on destruction or reuse of tapes, it's fine, but the statute allows those tapes to be reused and not having to be kept. Otherwise, everybody It's fine, but the statute allows those tapes to be reused and not having to be kept. Otherwise, everybody would be. A wash in cassette tapes or microcassette tapes or however it is now that's recorded. So hopefully that answered the question. Um, housing appeals board. Relatively new creation. More and more towns are having items brought before it. It has a fairly broad scope pursuant to the provisions of uh, six seventy-nine. That I believe were in originally intended to be for workforce housing and then the statute morphed. And basically becomes anything that is dealing with housing. I'm not quite sure if it makes sense for them to take like the deck that is the the variance subject. I'm also not sure that they have jurisdiction if it's a commercial operation that is next to. Uh, residential uses. But that's all going to be shaken out in the wash. It is. A matter that is at least so far been the topic of legislation in each of the subsequent sessions. Once it's been uh, once it was created. So far, those decisions, however, are indicating that they're following the same format and standard. As cases brought to Superior Court. So you have a, you have a set standard of. Your ZBA decisions are deemed prima facie lawful and reasonable. Puts the burden on the applicant or the complaining party to show that the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. Uh, so you start a little bit ahead of the game with that prima facie lawful and reasonable. There is um. A a growing body of decisions. Um, and they seem to have been doing, doing fairly well. I don't. Have a ZBA decision that has gone from the HAB up to Supreme Court. There have been a couple of planning board decisions. That have gone. But my advice is watch uh, watch for the Supreme Court dealing with the HAB more. And also watch pending legislation. And now we get to sixteen sixty-one.
Just a time check. We have about a minute, but we could go a little bit over.
Oh dear, I am so sorry.
I know you just have a few slides left, so.
This is, this is a very lengthy bill. So lengthy that the provisions that we are concerned with start at section seventy. Um, the first is training. Training is still voluntary. The second is fees. Key here is fees have to be listed. On your website at town hall. If it's not on the website or at town hall, you can't charge them. And one of my recommendations is to have the caveat at the bottom, depending upon the application. Uh. Review of third parties such as lawyers or engineers may be charged. Something like that allows you to still follow the statute and charge those third-party review fees to an applicant. Uh, section seventy-two, uh, by now allows elderly. Uh, density uh, benefits incentives to apply to workforce housing. You are allowed to modify your uh, provisions uh, at last town meeting if you didn't. They're going to be applying to workforce housing if you give uh, relief to the elderly provisions. Key here is the uh, sections of seventy-three. Your written decisions have to include those findings of fact, those because statements. Especially when you're denying, but the benefit of having it in is also there for. Uh, your approvals. Uh, anything you give us as your town council that allows us to support your decision in front of the court. Uh, is a benefit. Uh, amending uh, the timing provision for your decisions, you have to make a decision within ninety days. Of the date of receipt of the application. If you cannot make that decision within that timeframe and the applicant will not give you an extension. The recommendation is deny without prejudice with an exact listing of what you need to make your decision. The missing information. Also here, folks, there is now fee shifting and bonding required on appeals. Appeals brought to Superior Court. If the court finds that the ZBA was um. Made its decision uh. With gross negligence in bad faith or with malice. The town can be hit for the appellate attorney's fees. Never a place you want to be. So it is one where uh, this fee shifting is new. We don't have any instances yet to my knowledge where it's been applied. But it is one where it applies to the Superior Court, not to the Housing Appeals Board. Um, I am happy to take any question if I have, can do it in the next ten seconds. If not, I'll see you at twelve forty-five. And I thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Chris. Um, yeah, we, I've been um, keeping track of all the questions that have been coming in. So I can just bring them forward at our twelve forty-five session, which is why we did it was so we can address. All these questions and together in one session.
That'd be great.
Right, so um, with that, we are going to wrap up. Um, so we thank you again. We encourage feedback. With our uh, feedback survey and um. We will be back online at twelve forty-five after lunch. Enjoy your lunch. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.